Good evening and welcome to this meeting of Troy City Council. My name is William Lutz, President of Council. It is Monday, February 6th, it is 7:00 PM, we are in council chambers. We will begin this meeting with the invocation of the Pledge of Allegiance. I will give the invocation and I, please stand. Heavenly Father, thank you so much for this beautiful day. Thank you for this beautiful community which we get to call home. Lord, we are grateful for those that serve our community selflessly and with care and compassion. And Lord, we ask for your patience and guidance during this meeting. We ask all this in your son's name. Amen.
Amen.
Our president is the flag of the United States of America and in tribute of our oath of allegiance stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Schilling.
President.
Mr. Witten.
Here.
Mrs. Snee, here. Mr. Pierce.
President.
Mr. Phillips.
Here.
Mr. Rozell.
Here.
Mrs. Marshall.
Here.
Mr. Twist.
Here.
Mr. Severt.
It has been moved to excuse Mr. Severt by Mr. Schilling, seconded by Mr. Phillips.
Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Witten.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee, yes. Mr. Pierce.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Severt is excused.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, we agree to your summary of the minutes of the January 17th, 2023 meeting of Troy City Council.
Minutes of Council, January 17th. There was a presentation on behalf of Rumpke of Ohio. Committee reports, Safety and Health Committee, provided a status report regarding beekeeping being permitted in residential districts. Streets and sidewalks committee recommended that legislation be prepared approving the consent legislation of ODOT to pave a portion of State Route 55, Staunton Road. Committee of the whole provided a report regarding amended DORA application with it indicated that the legislation would be postponed indefinitely so that changes could be made to the application. Personnel committee reported regarding an appointment to the Enterprise National Tax and Center Review Council and a motion was approved for the appointment of Howard Winger to that organization. Resolution number R-4, 2023, consent and cooperation with ODOT paved a portion of State Route 55, first reading and adopted. Ordinance number O-1, 2023. Amended DORA application was given first reading and postponed indefinitely. Following comments, Council adjourned 7:24.
How's Counsel, wish you to dispose of the minutes this evening?
Second.
It's been moved to accept the minutes by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Rozell. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Snee, yes. Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Witten?
Yes.
None of them are approved.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Sit back and relax, folks, we have 14 reports to go through this evening, so we may be here for a while.
Take notes.
We'll begin with the Community and Economic Development Committee, Mr. Schilling with his four reports.
Yes, I have four reports tonight, thank you so much. Okay, on January 23rd, this committee met to consider a request that a 180-day moratorium be established on permits for new self-storage facilities. This will provide staff with time to evaluate and recommend appropriate land use regulations. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared establishing a 180-day moratorium on permits for new applications for self-storage facilities for miss staff time to evaluate and recommend appropriate land use regulations so that the review can proceed without delay. This committee supports emergency legislation. And as respectfully submitted by Mr. Pierce, Mrs. Snee, and myself, Jeff Schilling as Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Schilling. Are there any comments or questions on this report? Seeing none, Mr. Schilling, please continue.
Thank you. On January 23rd, the committee met to consider a request to vacate a utility easement and dedicate a utility easement associated with a replat on Troy Town Drive that will combine two parcels into one lot for development. It is the recommendation of this committee that the legislation be prepared approving vacating the utility easement between part of In-Lot 6889 and In-Lot 6888, parcel numbers DO8058333 and DO8058334, and dedicating a new five-foot wide utility easement along the south side of the new lot. This committee supports emergency legislation so that replat can be finalized and the development proceed. This is respectfully submitted by Mr. Pierce, Mrs. Snee, and myself, Jeff Schilling as Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Schilling. Are there any comments or questions on this report? Seeing none, you can continue.
Thank you. On January 30th, committee members Pearson and Schilling met to consider the recommendation of the Planning Commission that Council accept the dedication of a right-of-way and a six-foot utility easement along 1266 Peters Road to provide for the future development of this lot. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared, accepting .067 acres of In-Lot 10574 as right-of-way and accepting a five-foot utility easement and authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to execute related documents. And this was respectfully submitted by Mr. Pierce and Mrs. Snee, myself, Jeff Schilling as Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Schilling. Any comments or questions on this report? Mr. Phillips?
Thank you, just to point out that it is five-foot easement on six, as you put it in the first paragraph.
I'm sorry.
There's a typo on your page.
Oh, okay, well, I just read what they tell me to. Duly noted. Any other comments or questions? Mr. Schilling, please continue.
Okay, thank you. On January 30th, committee members Pearson and Schilling met to consider accepting a utility easement being dedicated to the city by the property owners of 935 Atlantic Street. Staff has recommended that this easement dedication, and is needed, associated with the Madison Street Stormwater Pump Station. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared, accepting the utility easement to the rear of 935 Atlantic Street related to the Madison Street Stormwater Pump Station and authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to execute related documents. And again, this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Pierce, Mrs. Snee, and myself, Jeff Schilling as Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Schilling. Any comments or questions on this report? Seeing none, we'll move over to the Finance Committee and standing in for Mr. Severt tonight is Mr. Rozell.
Thank you. Committee members Phillips and Rozell met on January 23rd to consider an agreement with Palmer Energy Company, Inc., related to the government electric aggregation opt-out program. This company is providing services related to bidding for the Mommy Valley Communications Council, MVCC, on behalf of a number of area communities. The resultant bid process is to provide competitive electric rates to residents and qualifying small businesses of those communities that wish to participate in the program. Additionally, the company will negotiate an extension rate with the city's current aggregation supplier as Troy's current contract will expire prior to the implementation of the MVCC contract. Again, the program will continue to be one that is an opt-out for those residents, businesses not wanting avail themselves to the aggregated rate. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared, authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to enter an agreement with Palmer Energy Company, Inc., related to services for the government electric aggregation opt-out program. This committee supports emergency legislation so that the consultant can commence work on behalf of the city of Troy without delay. This is respectfully submitted by Bobby Phillips, myself, William Rozell, and Todd Severt.
Thank you, Mr. Rozell. Any comments or questions on this report? Seeing none, you can see, Mr. Rozell.
All right. Once again, committee members Phillips and Rozell met on January 23rd to consider the recommendation of the Loan Review Committee that the personal guarantee of Anthony M. Scott be released from the loan to Tabernacle Brewing Company, LLC. This loan was approved in 2018. Mr. Scott recently sold his interest in the business to the other party who also provided a personal guarantee. The loan remains adequately secured. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared, releasing the direct guarantee agreement of Anthony M. Scott from the city's loan to Tabernacle Brewing Company, LLC, and authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to execute any related documents. Once again, this is submitted by Bobby Phillips, myself, and Todd Severt.
Thank you, Mr. Rozell. Any comments or questions on this report? You can go ahead with your last report.
Third with last, a little more fun. This committee met on January 30th to consider authorizing bidding to July 4th fireworks for a contract for up to three years at a cost not to exceed $45,000 per year. Due to factors including material and shipping prices, the cost of a firework show has substantially increased over the $30,000 expiring contract cost. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared, authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for up to three years for fireworks at a cost not to exceed $45,000 per year. Once again, submitted by Bobby Phillips, myself, and Todd Severt.
Thank you, Mr. Rozell. Any comments or questions on this report? Seeing none, we'll go to the Recreation and Parks Committee and Mr. Witten.
Thank you, Mr. President. This committee met on January 23rd to consider authorizing the bidding of the Marina Building loading dock support project. The project's scope would be to install additional concrete walls to reinforce areas where there is deterioration of the structural steel. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared, authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for Marina Building loading dock support project at a cost not to exceed $125,000. This is respectfully submitted by Mr. Rozell, Mr. Schilling, and myself as Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Witten. Any comments or questions on this report? Seeing none, please go ahead.
This committee also met on January 23rd to consider the request of the Troy Recreation Board that Council authorize bidding of the ICE Deck cover replacement project for Hobart Arena. The current cover has exceeded its useful life and its condition has deteriorated so that needs to be replaced. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared, authorizing the Recreation Board of the City of Troy, Ohio, to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the ICE Deck cover replacement project at a cost not to exceed $170,000. And once again, this was respectfully submitted by Mr. Rozell, Mr. Schilling, and myself as Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Witten. Any comments or questions on this report? Seeing none, move on to the Safety and Health Committee and Mr. Twist.
Thank you, Mr. President. This committee met on January 23rd to review recommendations of staff related to permitting urban beekeeping in the agricultural zoning districts in all but the densest single-family residential zoning district, R-5. The staff recommendations are discussed in the detailed report below. This committee is supportive of the recommendations of the staff and recommends legislation be prepared based on that recommendation, subject to forwarding the proposed amendments to the Planning Commission for review and recommendation back to Council to follow the required process for amending the zoning code. It is duly noted that the Planning Commission did recommend the proposed amendments at its January 25th meeting. This is respectfully submitted by Kristi Marshall, Jeffrey Witten, and myself as Chair, William Twist.
Thank you, Mr. Twist. Any comments or questions on this report? Seeing none, we'll go to the Streets and Sidewalks Committee and Mr. Phillips.
Thank you, Mr. President. On January 23rd, this committee met to consider recommending the resolution of necessity for Phase 15 of the sidewalk replacement program. Phase 15 includes approximately 236 parcels where replacements or repairs have been identified. These property owners would be given until May 16, 2023, to obtain a permit for the work thereafter. The repairs would be made by the city of Troy, by the city. It is recommendation of this committee that the resolution of necessity be prepared for Phase 15 of the sidewalk replacement program, and this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Pierce, Mrs. Snee, and myself as Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Any comments or questions on this report? Seeing none, we have a few oral reports. We'll begin with the Law and Ordinance Committee with two liquor permit applications.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Ohio Division of Liquor Control has transmitted the notice of the transfer of the existing C1 and C2 liquor permits of Fuel 1 LLC doing business as 55 Express Mart, 503 East Staunton Road, to Staunton Petroleum LLC doing business as Staunton Shell of the same address. The police department has not recommended an objection or hearing request be filed, and this has now been announced. Also, the Ohio Division of Liquor Control has transmitted the notice of a new C1 application for Craft Event Bar Collective LLC, 12 North Cherry Street. A C1 permit is defined as beer only in original sealed container for carryout only. The Development Office advised that this business will be located to the back of the Masonic Temple Building and plans to be involved in events at that building. The police department has not recommended an objection or hearing request be filed, and this has been announced.
Thank you, Mrs. Snee. Any comments or questions on the liquor permit application? Seeing none, we'll go to our last oral report in the committee of the evening, the Personnel Committee and Mr. Pierce.
Mayor Oda has requested Council consent of the appointment of John W. Schweizer to the Board of Zoning Appeals to fill the unexpired term of the late Richard Burns, which would be through December 31st, 2025. I move the Council consent to the appointment of John W. Schweizer to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a term convincing immediately and running through December 31st, 2025.
Second.
It has been moved by Mr. Pierce and seconded by Mr. Phillips to appoint Mr. Schweizer to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Any comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Snee, yes. Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Witten?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. We now move into Citizen Commons on the agenda. We've had 14 reports, six resolutions, and six ordinances. If you wish to speak on any of those items, you are invited to come to the podium, give your name and address, and you have two minutes to address counsel. Seeing no one, we'll move directly into our resolutions. Mrs. Knight, will you please read the first resolution of the evening, Resolution R-5, 2023.
Resolution number R-5, 2023. Resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio, to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the Marina Building loading dock support project at Treasure Island Park. It's going to cost not to exceed $125,000, first reading.
Second.
It has been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Witten, seconded by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Witten?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
The three reading rule has been suspended. It has been moved to adopt the resolution by Mrs. Snee, seconded by Mr. Twist. Are there any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Witten?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read the next resolution of the evening, Resolution R-6, 2023.
Resolution number R-6, 2023. Resolution authorizing the Recreation Board of the City of Troy, Ohio, to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the ICE Deck replacement project at the Hobart Arena. Cost not to exceed $170,000, first reading.
Second.
It has been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Witten, seconded by Mr. Schilling. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Witten?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes. Moved to adopt.
Second.
The three reading rule has been suspended. It has been moved to adopt the resolution by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Twist. Are there any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Witten?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read the next resolution of the evening, Resolution R-7, 2023.
Resolution number R-7, 2023. Resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio, to enter into an agreement for professional services with Palmer Energy Company, Inc. of Toledo, Ohio, related to pricing related to the government aggregation opt-out program and declaring an emergency. This is the first reading.
Second.
It has been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Schilling, seconded by Mr. Pierce. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Witten?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Moved to adopt.
The three reading rule has been suspended. It has been moved to adopt the resolution by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Twist. Are there any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Witten?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read the next resolution of the evening, Resolution R-8, 2023.
Resolution number R-8, 2023. Resolution declaring the necessity of Phase 15 of the sidewalk replacement program in the city of Troy, Ohio. This is the first reading.
I got it.
It has been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Schilling. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Witten?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Witten?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
The three reading rule has been suspended. It has been moved to adopt the resolution by Mrs. Snee, seconded by Mr. Phillips. Are there any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Witten?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read the next resolution of the evening, Resolution R-9, 2023.
Resolution number R-9, 2023. Resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio, to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for up to three years for the July 4th fireworks. Cost not to exceed $45,000 per year. This is the first reading.
It has been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Schilling. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Witten?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
The three reading rule has been suspended. It has been moved to adopt the resolution by Mrs. Snee, seconded by Mr. Rozell. Are there any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Witten?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you read the final resolution of the evening, Resolution R-10, 2023.
Resolution number R-10, 2023. Resolution releasing direct guarantee agreement of Anthony M. Scott from the CDBG Economic Development revolving loan to Tabernacle Brewing Company, LLC, DVA Moeller Brew House. This is being released as Mr. Scott no longer has an interest in the business. This is the first reading.
Move to suspend. Second.
It has been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Phillips. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Witten?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read the next ordinance of the evening, Ordinance O-2, 2023?
Ordinance number O-3... Sorry. O-2, sorry. I pulled the wrong... Sorry. Ordinance number O-2, 2023. Ordinance imposing moratorium for a period of 180 days on the acceptance of applications and the granting of permits for new self-storage facilities within the city of Troy, Ohio and declaring an emergency. First reading.
Move to suspend.
Second.
It has been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Pierce. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Whitten?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read the next ordinance of the evening, Ordinance O-3, 2023?
Ordinance number O-3, 2023. Ordinance vacating a portion of a utility easement between parcels, DO-8058333 and DO-8058334, dedicating a utility easement on the south side of parcel number DO-8058333 on Troy Town Drive and declaring an emergency. This is the first reading.
Okay, go ahead. Move to suspend. I'm sorry. Okay. It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Schilling, seconded by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read the next ordinance of the evening, Ordinance O-4, 2023?
Ordinance number O-4, 2023. Ordinance to accept the application for the annexation of certain territory containing 163.634 acres, more or less, in Concord Township to the city of Troy, Ohio. This is the final acceptance of the Isen-Hugel Annexation Council previously provided initial consent to the county. This is the first reading.
Move for suspension. Second.
It has been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Pierce. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
The three reading rule has been suspended. It has been moved to adopt the ordinance by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Whitten. Are there any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.